All right, gentlemen, are you ready?
Okay. Good evening. Welcome, everybody, to Bennington Select Board Meeting, Monday, April 22nd, Bennington Farm Facility, at 6:00. I ask that we please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
To the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in whose love we pray.
Ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence, so we remember the tragedy that happened in Boston last week, and the tragedy we had here in our own town this weekend, with the death of Scott Moffett less than 500 yards from here, and hope for speed to recover from his mother. So if you just please give us a thoughts. The minutes for April 8th.
I'll move to be accepted as printed.
We have a motion. Any discussion in the minutes for April 8th? None? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Board, I'm going to go off the agenda slightly. We have a guest here tonight who is a very busy lady, and she just shouldn't be made waiting out here. I've got, we have President Karen Gross, President of Southern Vermont College, going to talk to us about a concept of a bookstore. Karen, you want to come up to the microphone, so the people at home can hear you, and the people out at home can see you also on camera.
Well, hello, and thank you for inviting me to join you. I want to thank Joe and Jim Carroll for giving me this opportunity to share an idea with you, and to gauge whether there's town interest in this idea. So, since I have been the President of Southern Vermont College, one of the things that I've tried to think about is how to make downtown Bennington more of a, quote, "college town", so that students would spend more time downtown. And as you may know, we opened a health education center, which is, at least on the periphery of downtown, depending on how you define it, and I wanted to share an idea that has come through various of our departments at the college, which is to think about opening a college-run, and it could be more than one college, college-run store/cafe somewhere downtown, either in an existing facility that may be selling, or in some other space that may be available. And the idea is that this would actually be a student-run business as part of their academic program, and you could picture that some of the things that could be sold there could be things that students create in various art programs, or other college memorabilia that might be of interest not only to college students, but to other people who are citizens of the town, or pass through as guests. And if you can picture also the possibility of some evening events, open-mic nights, whether that's poetry reading, or guitar playing, or something like that. And so the idea here is to think about using the skill sets of our students, whether those are business students, or communication students, for purposes of marketing such a store location, to enrich our community, to enrich the opportunities that exist for our students to get hands-on experience by actually running a business, so that when they graduate, they have the skills to do that, but also to be a place that's welcoming not just to students, but to the citizens, as well as the public, as they pass through town. And the idea, of course, is to get involvement, if at all possible, with all three colleges that exist in this region, but to use the skill sets, I hope, of students to run this, not only for the benefit of while they're running it, but for their future careers. So I wanted to share that idea with all of you, to get a sense as to whether it met with interest, before we proceeded further on campus to explore whether this is feasible, both academically and financially.
Karen, is there a place at the college that the people listening tonight could call and get more information, or talk to somebody, or express their interest to the college directly? I mean, they're going to come to us, obviously, all, we'll hear, I'm sure, phone calls from the citizens out there, but is there a point of contact you want to establish?
They're welcome to call my office and share their viewpoint. My number's 802-447-6319. Again, 802-447-6319. And we'd welcome some feedback. And the key is, by the way, to create a place that people want to go to. That's a destination place, not just for our own students, and the students of the other colleges, although that's very important, but the citizens of the town, but also outsiders who come in, who could learn more about what is available here in terms of higher education.
Okay. Karen, or Sharon?
Thank you. How do you see the structure? Do you see the college going out and renting a space, and having some kind of supervision over the whole thing at some point, or jointly the colleges will rent a space? Have you ever thought that?
Space, we would rent space. And I, at least from the Southern Vermont College perspective, the idea is the students would be working under the guidance of a professor, who would be in charge of overseeing. And it's highly probable that one would need some sort of regular, permanent staff to be there to ensure continuity, because students would come and go over time, and so you'd want some continuity. But the idea for me, and the really critical educational piece for me, is the opportunity to link theory and practice. You can read all you want about how a business works. It's a very different thing to actually run a business, from the marketing, to the merchandising, to the paperwork that's involved, to the customer service, to the books that are kept. And so the idea for me is to enable our students to have a real-life experience doing that. And there are certainly other ways that the colleges in the area could participate, whether directly as co-partners with us, or by providing some of the merchandise, or by participating in other ways. So we're open to all opportunities, but I am sharing it here with all of you, in the hopes that you can share whether you think this is even a good concept to consider, before we proceed much further down the road.
Tom, you got something?
I, really, I would love to encourage it, because I think anything that you can do to make the town vibrant, and by bringing the students downtown, where they have a place to interact, is certainly a good step in that direction. So I would encourage you to get a business plan together, and make a decision, and I support it.
Okay. Greg, I know you were looking for more guitar players for your band.
Well, it's, I mean, one of the, we've been running the Bennington Cultural Summit, has had its second meeting last week, and one of the priorities is to engage audiences at all ages, and targeting students at all levels, and, you know, getting them involved. From that aspect, I think that's a great presence downtown, to try and, again, make downtown feel like yours to someone who's here for four years, or, you know, for two years, or whatever. My cautions would be, some of the business model sounds a little like some of the businesses that are already existing downtown, trying to bring students in, you know, with private entrepreneurs, you know. So my caution would be, one, subsidizing something that is in direct competition with somebody that's on the street, trying to make a living like that. But there's things we can do that are complementary. The other thing would be, you know, clashing business models on the same block type of thing, you know, and being in direct competition with somebody who's already entertaining your students, and is probably one of the, you know, some of the brighter spots downtown for people. We've also got discussions with the Economic Development Task Force, or Strategic Planning Force, about extending the hours of downtown, so trying to attract the younger crowd that gets up at 9:00 and goes out on a Friday night, you know, and hits the street at 10:30, you know. So, you know, I definitely think there's some, there's some potential there, and that's the right crowd. It's certainly a helpful thing to have real experience in the retail industry when you're in school. So with some cautions, yeah, I think it's, it could be a great thing downtown.
Other board members?
Yeah, I, I just, I, we've talked about it, and I know for years, we've been trying to bring the college students down into Bennington, you know, with various programs, and, you know, different things that we've done. So I would, you know, certainly support this. I would look forward to it.
You know how I feel about it. Absolutely support it 100 percent. You know, there's always existed, because of the relative remoteness of the college campuses in town, this sort of invisible wall, and Benningtonians really haven't crossed that border in many cases, where there have been art exhibits at any of the colleges, and to bring that downtown, I think, would be great, and it would give students a real opportunity to interact with Benningtonians as well.
As Sharon said, this has been talked about before, and I think it's a great idea, and I think now's the time to move. It's one of the things we're going to be talking about when we get into the strategic plan that we're talking about. One of the things is extend the bus hours, and make it more frequent, or something, and on the Fridays and Saturday nights, for those college kids that don't have cars, that might want to come down and do either the bookstore, or anything else you've got here. And, I mean, you've already got a program, you're working with the town, with the insurance, with the intern program, so we have kids working here with us now. I had an opportunity to tour your nursing facility down there, it's fantastic. I mean, this is, I've looked at it, it's got a lot of potential for things other than the classroom, I'll tell you that, and I'm thinking about it. And your students are downtown also. They're over at the Veterans Home, working over there, and so they're pretty active in this community, but they're not so much, so visible downtown. This will help them, bring them down there, it'd be a great idea, so. Anybody else?
Just one more suggestion, if I may, and ask that John Shanahan and Mike Harrington introduce themselves to the president. I think you guys may be very helpful.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you again, Mike Harrington.
And John is the Director of Better Bennington Corporation, Karen. So I think John should be working with you, as you're looking at the downtown area, so it's great. Okay, you want something, Justin?
Sure. You know, your college and its students are an asset to Bennington. I think it'd definitely be good to have them downtown. You know, you have every right to open a business in Bennington, regardless as to whether or not this board approves it or not, but I think you hear from us that we think it's a good idea, and I appreciate you bringing it forward to us, and, you know, we look forward to hopefully seeing it to fruition, so, thank you.
Well, thank you all, and for me, it's important to hear that there's positive support for this, and an idea worth pursuing. So I will go back to our faculty, and share with them that this group is of the belief that this would enhance the community, which is our goal, and that's why we have so many students out in the community now, and this would be yet one more way that our students could engage here in Bennington. So I thank you, and look forward to seeing if we can turn an idea into more than an idea.
Do you have ID cards for grandparents that have children up here at the college? Do I need to go apply for one now?
Absolutely, and congratulations on that.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Inside joke, my granddaughter's moving up here, she's been accepted to college, she'll start, she'll start this fall, and I gave the president a picture of her holding up her certificate, being accepted into college, she's really excited about it. So one of my dreams is coming true, getting some of my kids back here to Bennington. Okay, we skipped the warrants, let's start down at, John, you have anything on the warrants tonight?
I didn't have any questions, no.
Okay. Justin?
I don't, Joe.
Okay.
I'm good.
Tom, you have anything?
They've all been answered, thank you.
Okay. Greg?
All set, thank you.
Hey, wait a minute, last time Stuart wasn't here, Dan was here, we had no questions on the warrant. Somebody got a question.
I did not see anything about zombies, or anything on that, the warrant's just done, we're good.
Is he paying, Sharon, you have anything?
No, I had a couple of questions, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to torture him.
All right, we're going to let Dan off the hook.
You can send me an email.
He was probably prepared.
I was, I have, I'll look on my notes.
Dan's always prepared, so that doesn't surprise us. Okay, great. The next item, the citizens, any citizens out there that want to speak to the board of people of Bennington on an issue that is not on our agenda this evening? Okay, if not, we're going to go in, Kia, you want to come up to the mic?
Oh, yeah.
We're going to read the proclamation. You want to bring people with you, go ahead. Kia, bring anybody up you'd like.
They're just dying to be in front of the camera, I can tell.
Kia, why don't you introduce who you've got with you, and then we're going to have, Sharon's going to read the proclamation for Youth Appreciation Day, and let you say a few things about it, okay?
Thank you very much, Joe. So my name's Kaia Morris, I'm the Community Health Improvement Specialist from Southern, Southwestern Vermont Medical Center. I have here with me Veronica Area and Nicole Rao, who are both AmeriCorVista volunteers that are working with the hospital for a year, and we're here today in great celebration of presenting to the town a proclamation to establish a Youth Appreciation Day. And this is actually a kind of a mini-movement that happened, really based off of the youth risk behavior surveys, which are surveys that local teens take throughout the state of Vermont, to talk about a number of different topics. And every year after year, kids say that they don't feel they matter to their communities. It's not a small percentage, it's always more than half. And so this was a way of being able to say, let's set a day, let's mobilize an opportunity for communities to really come out and say, we love our youth, we recognize they're a vital part of our state's future, and we celebrate all the great gifts that they have to offer. So the actual proclamation that we have in front of you today was crafted by students from the Career Development Center's pre-law class, which is taught by Bruce Lee Clark. They researched how to write a proclamation, they researched how to put the language together, and came up with those actual phrasings themselves. So this is the localized version, and we have one that's actually up in the Vermont Legislature, being reviewed, to hopefully be adopted on a statewide level. So we're very excited that this has started here in Bennington, and that Bennington can lead the way, and really making something substantial that kids can be really proud of, and as a community, we can be proud of, so.
Thank you, Kia. Okay, Sharon, you can go ahead and read the proclamation, please.
Sure. Town of Bennington Proclamation, Youth Appreciation Day, April 27, 2013. Whereas the youth of Bennington County participate in volunteer activities and programs through their schools, religious organizations, or privately for the betterment of their community; and whereas many youth of Bennington are employed in the region, providing needed services for the people of Southern Vermont; and whereas the youth of Bennington participate in school and non-school activities, which provide greatly needed enjoyment and entertainment in this community; and whereas the youth of Bennington are engaged in the use and development of technology, promote new skills and abilities that enhance the county; and whereas the youth of Bennington are engaged in projects that improve the environment, including but not limited to participating in local Greenup Day; and whereas many youth of Bennington provide support services which enable family members to be employed, thus supporting their families; and whereas the youth of Bennington are essential for the growth and development of an economy where entrepreneurs will prosper, where a culture of respect, commitment, and independence will flourish, and where an educational system will develop students for the future of the town and the state. Now therefore, we the Bennington Select Board do hereby proclaim April 27, 2013, as a Youth Appreciation Day, and be it further proclaimed that the last Saturday in April, be declared Youth Appreciation Day in the Town of Bennington for years to come.
Can I have a motion to approve the proclamation, Youth Appreciation Day? You have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
It's great.
And that is unanimous. Kia, thank you. I look forward to seeing you, 4:00 on Saturday, right?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, Mike Harrington, why don't you pull up a chair, get up here, because I think you're going to have some questions, and I want you on camera. The next item we're going to be talking about, the Bennington Economic Development Plan Discussion, and in your pocket, you see a draft of a 90-day action agenda. And after our last meeting, I sensed that there was some concern to maybe narrow this down to what we want to focus on, so I asked Dan to prepare this thing. And Dan, why don't you take us through it?
Sure. Just to kind of reorient everybody to where we are in the process, the Steering Committee is seeking input from the Select Board before we go ahead and finalize a plan for your review, so we are still in preliminary stages here. We feel, we have heard your previous comments, and we will be working those into the plan. Just so everyone knows, the plan will be reorganized somewhat, there'll be an executive summary developed, and we'll rearrange the priorities based on previous comments. It will include, if you folks agree, a 90-day action agenda. We have presented to you some proposed ideas that we'd like to ask for you to consider, and perhaps include, as I mentioned, in the final plan that will be given to you for your review, and hopefully adoption, so we can move forward with implementation of some of the action items as soon as possible. So our hope is this evening, the hope of the Steering Committee is to have you folks perhaps focus largely on the 90-day action agenda, let us know if you feel that some are all, or maybe some new ideas should be included in that, and we would then move quickly, hopefully by mid-May, to get a final draft before you folks, again, for your review and consideration, and hopefully adoption. So that's where we are in the process right now, looking for your final input.
Good comments.
Yeah, I was wondering if the Steering Committee, Mullen Associates and the Select Board might have another meeting? I know we had thought about that before, when we had the new Select Board come together, that we might have that final draft review.
Is Dr. Mullen's available to come back? Bill, no?
His contract is over.
It's over, but we can meet with our Steering Committee and the Select Board, we can do that. You know, I think, I don't know what more we want to hear from Dr. Mullen's, I mean, he spent time here, he gave us a pretty good report.
Okay.
What Dan said, that we've, I've asked for anyways, that executive summary, because as we went through the plan before, you know, he's bouncing pages and pages and pages, it focused down a little narrower, but yeah, we can do that.
Sooner rather than later, again, keeping time in mind.
Okay. Other comments? How about the things that we've listed on the 90-day, the recommended 90-day action agenda? We talked about one of them tonight, obviously, with President Gross being here, about the property or lease of the college's downtown store in Bennington.
Sure.
I think we heard that was probably not a bad idea. Greg?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'm comfortable with all of this, as far as, you know, the theory of it, and, you know, the getting started on something. I think the key is, the first one there is establishing an oversight, you know, a steering task force that's going to prioritize and create these work plans, identify the, you know, the key organizations, like in the implementation plan, if you look at that, you've got lead organization, support from time to complete, you know, those kind of work plans are important for these. A lot of these initiatives are already in progress.
Right.
There are things that are being done, so, you know, we want to identify those, see what they need, are they hung up on something, do they need to go? So I think once, once we adopt this, we can, we can put that into play, and I think a lot of that is already going on, it can go on, you know, and then specific things we have, like Wi-Fi and whatnot.
Right.
We can then move forward on.
Let me ask, let me ask you a gun that one, Greg, and this is one of the ones I'm wrestling with. I think that, what I'm reading this first one is, we're looking for a Select Board in the approval of the plan, but also to formalize the task force as a committee that works for the Select Board. Is that correct, the way he reads that? Tom?
Yeah, I thought it was, that was the number three on the original, but I think that's number one.
I think that would be number one.
Because we need a entity to keep us on task, because we're not going to be doing this as often as the management team and certain other individuals. And I think, once you get that created and formalized, these other items are going, they're going to be making sure that they happen or don't happen, and report back to us.
Right.
Joe, John Shanahan and I spoke about this topic last week. John, can you get up and talk about that again? Just go over it briefly. How that, there is...
We were just talking about something else.
You're not listening.
Task force.
It's sort of the formalization of the Bennington economic...
He said that there exists not a task force, per se, but a group that...
I don't want to make it the conversation, but yeah, we did talk about it. It was formed for communication purposes, and we've taken on a larger role than we had originally expected, so the formalization, whatever that might mean. I mean, we're already organized, and we meet on a regular basis with sec committees and committee chairs. We are hoping to, once this is completed, as a group, adopt this, also as maybe a framework for us to use as we move forward.
But did any of those people on that committee, on those committees, actually work on this?
All of them.
They all did?
Yeah, yeah. Well, not all of them. They're all familiar with it, because as you see at the end of the report, where the goals were set out, it's already been chosen, like the BBC, the Chamber, the BCRC, who would be involved with it.
Are school board members a part of this group?
Yes.
They are, they're already on there.
Pretending is, yes.
And also other educators besides, other people in the administration, school administration.
Catherine is a member, and then like Sean Marie will attend meetings as needed, and more than that, too. They've come as it's been on the agenda.
Any of the managers from the manufacturers in our town, are they on there as well?
They're on there. And it's, as you know, it's, again, we started us and the Chamber, and it's been growing, 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 growing. We're bringing people in, and like, Joe's been on since day one.
Let me, let me just pop in here, I mean, I'm going back to Dr. Mullen sitting here a few weeks ago, and he was talking about, you know, you don't, you don't ask the CEO of the company to sit on these kind of task force, but you get a good person in there. Having sat there, Mike sat on it, John's obviously in there, that we've got the people here, they really want to put the effort into doing this work. My thought, and my concern, and I don't know how to go about this, but obviously Mike Harrington's going to be on the board, he's going to be the town's representative on that board, we're going to make that happen, I mean, we should have him there. But, the structure of the board, I mean, should we leave it up to the members that are participating to appoint a chair, a vice chair? You've already got committees, you want to formalize those committees, that's where I'm coming from. Do we want to do that? Mike, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, let me just jump in, because we, we talked about this at the last Economic Development Task Force meeting. The group is certainly very aware of the plan, they've contributed throughout the process, and they're at a point where they're very comfortable identifying what that relationship could look like. And so my suggestion to this group would be, as long as you're okay with the 90-day action plan, we've already started the framework for that first one, which is formalizing the relationship between this group and the task force. Let Dan and I work with them, put together a framework of what that would look like, and bring it back to you when it's appropriate. But as long as you're okay with this 90-day action plan, that gives us the ability...
I think what I, well, one, one of the things here is, I expect, and I think the other board members, I mean, this, this task force is no longer there to be a committee accountable to the board. They'll get directions from us, I expect them to be in front of us at some kind of frequency, maybe every two months, every 90 days, give us an update, or whatever the case may be, so that people know where we're moving with this thing, and so we can change course if we feel we're off course a little bit, so you feel you can be able to come back to that.
Yeah, and the way we've talked about it, and we're still ironing out exactly what that would look like, but the idea would be that I would be the town's liaison between that group and this board, working the plan on behalf of the board, bringing it back to you for regular updates, end-of-the-year report, and so on. And the group really becomes an advisory group that they're working to also champion the plan forward in different initiatives. The, the only caution I would put out there is how formal you want the group to be, because these are a group of community, interest, and like-minded individuals that didn't necessarily sign up to be on the, on this group, to be a town committee, or board, or commission. And so they are there, they're willing to donate their time and energy to this, and they're willing to move forward with it. And I think we've got a pretty good layout, without making it so formal that it becomes a hindrance to the process moving forward.
Other board members? Tom?
I just see that as critical, the formalization of it, because you've got to have a group that takes ownership and champions this, and I think they have to be willing, unfortunately, to step up, be identified, and accountable, and that's what I think I need, because you can do these 90-day action items within the town management system right now, but you're going to need outside sources, and I think we need to have an identified group that is willing to step up, and they should have their charter that they create, come back to us, and outline what they plan to do.
I think it makes perfect sense, I mean, we have, we have a design review board with quite a few active participants in town, and why there isn't an Economic Development Committee, or...
Justin, go ahead, throw yours in.
Yeah, I think, you know, I agree with what Tom just said, basically. I think it was your idea, Joe, two weeks ago, that we actually look to formulate something, formulate something, excuse me, where it's actually, you know, really held accountable to the board and to the town. Not that people aren't putting in a lot of effort and doing a good job, I don't mean to say that, but I think it's an important process where we can actually appoint a certain number of people, you know, whether it's five people, or seven people, to an actual board, similar to what we have with the planning commission, to move forward with things, and then report back with a kind of cohesive message back to the Select Board.
I'm not sure I want to...
It's important for everybody, as many people to be involved as possible, but I think when it comes to actually getting into, you know, what direction they want to go in, and making decisions, it's a little bit more formalized, where you have specific folks kind of leading the way in doing it.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be that formal, that we have to... I don't, yeah, I don't think it needs to be that formal, that we have to actually appoint members to be on the committee.
Right.
You know, all of these... Well, how would you do it differently?
Well, all of these people have already volunteered their time, and they've been working for months on this, and I think they're, they've got a commitment to it right now. You know, you don't want it to get out of hand, and...
But when they come up, my fear is, when you come up, when one segment or sect of folks wants to go in one direction, and one wants to go in another, how do you break that stalemate and really come up with a, with a direction and what way you're going to move in, if you don't actually have some sort of structure and formalization to it? I mean, if there's a different way to do that, then I'm more than happy to listen to it, but I think that's kind of...
Because of the size of this, this is going to be a bigger committee, and some people will say it's maybe too big. I don't think it is, when I've seen the players that's on there. I mean, these are, these are, the players has got to be. But the formalization that I'm envisioning, and we'll ask further comments on this, is that, you know, Mike will come back to us. I think it has to have structure. I think it needs a chairman and a vice chairman. Yes, you're going to be the liaison between the town and there. I think it ought to have committee chairs and committee members. There's other things, but what I don't want to get into, I mean, we have a problem right now, we're re-warning board positions the town has down there, because people don't apply. This group, you're not going to have that problem. I think if somebody has to step down and move out of the area, Mike will find somebody, or somebody on the committee recommends somebody else to come to us to just give them the blessing that, yeah, you're on the committee, you're on the board. But it's got, it's got to have some kind of structure. I mean, we're holding the meetings in the firehouse there, or back here, we've got sometimes 25, 30 people all participating, all adding something that's pretty productive to this thing, so. I think what Mike's suggestion is, is let them go back, if that's our guidance. Tom, I think you're pretty clear on your guide, what you said there. I agree with that, and I think most people do. But come back to us, after you've talked to the group, and say, this is what the board's like, how can we present that to them? Is that agreeable to everybody?
Yeah, I think Dan wants to say some...
And just to be fair, we've already had these detailed discussions at the Economic Development Task Force. Mike's already drafted a proposal for, for me to review, and then to get to you folks once this plan is adopted.
Okay.
So we're moving forward on that. The, the task force has been a wonderful partner right from the beginning on this plan. If you see the implementation plan, they've all agreed explicitly to be partners in those 10 priorities, so I don't really think we need to have another formal board. You're the formal board, you guys make decisions about where things go, and you have an employee, Mike Harrington, who can direct that effort. And if it doesn't work with the task force, then we work, we go through, through other partners. But I feel supremely confident that these are the folks that are going to get it done in partnership with you folks, and it's a way to go forward.
Okay, John?
That's my opinion.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little, little tongue-tied here, but I want to go along that same thought that we have, people that we're paying to do a certain job, and a lot of these, these goals and tasks that we've set before us fall into their category and their realm of their career and what we pay them for. Should they not champion those things individually, and then use the task force as their outlet to have those extra bodies help them along the way, but in the end, they would end up being accountable for a success or a failure of that objective, of the chosen 10, whatever we decide on? I know that's still kind of in the air right now.
You know, I think as a member of the Select Board, I'm accountable, I mean, I'm responsible. This is my plan as well as is ours. We've asked for this plan to be developed for the Select Board.
Not the plan as a whole, but each individual task, so when we're talking, when we're talking about...
I think that's a key part of us adopting it as a plan, and adopting the task force as an official committee of the town, so that recommendations from that committee that this member of the staff should be involved in this initiative then carries some weight as, as part of our, you know, oversight. I'd look for a recommendation from the task force as to what should make up, I've said this before, is what should make up that committee? One of the dangers of these things is people get on for life, you know, and a lot of people have been on for over a year now, and they've been working hard, and somebody may want to get off, you know, and have to do something else. What should be the makeup of that committee be, representative from these sectors, from these boards, or, you know, whatever, these, these organizations? So if, say, I'm on it and I step off, what is my role on that board? Who do I represent from, from industry or whatever? And so when you're looking for a replacement, we have an identity of who we want to replace, and we know when there's a gap on the board. Otherwise, you know, you wind up with seven people from the same, you know, background. You know, you have seven retired guys that all work together, and they, you know, have come from the same industry, and all, you know, 10 years down the line, and you're like...
You got to watch, you got to watch those retired guys.
You never know what they're going to, you know. But, but then, you know, all of a sudden, you have a board that isn't as balanced as it is now. So that would be a recommendation I'd like to see from the task force as to what would be the makeup of that.
I was going to say, most of what you've mentioned, as your concerns and thoughts, were discussed and are addressed in that memo that Dan has. So I think taking additional thoughts that you bring up, Greg, and some others, we can certainly go back, and I think craft something that meets the needs of this group and fills those concerns, which is around accountability, ownership, making sure you have the right makeup and the right people on the committee, and, and the right sectors represented. So if you're, if you're comfortable with us going back and flushing out that memo and coming back to you when it's appropriate, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly have the prerogative, if you don't like something they put in it, we can change it. So let's see what they come up with as a plan, and then go from there.
Tom, let me go down this way. Do you have something else, John?
Yeah, I mean, there's a few other things that I'd like to talk about, but I guess...
Talk about this first part we got here.
Right, just that one.
About the plan, about the organization.
Yeah, I guess to touch on what you said, I don't see how we aren't the initial first board that needs to be directing this, and then we have our outlets. I mean, it's the reason that we have these paid positions.
Right.
And so when we're talking about, I mean, one thing I was talking to Dan about was pathways and bike paths, that's kind of something that he, that he does. So if we have an objective, then it's our job to say, Dan, this is what we want you to be working on, present something to us in X amount of days. So here's our objective, this is our strategic action item that we want you to take, that's something that we're already appointing. So to appoint an entire force, to then decide that Dan needs to be the person on that objective seems a little redundant.
Well, you know, the, the people that are, that are already part of this, this group have abilities and skill sets that none of us...
Oh, I agree, and I think they're going to be...
Okay, then I don't think that we could intelligently speak on some of these initiatives without some grounded, well-rounded and grounded information that these people would bring to us.
And that's not what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, we, we have Dan to be the champion on those type of items, and then he would use the force, or the team that we've already collected, the Steering Committee, and he would pick out people that would be able to help him along the way as well, and it, but ultimately would land on his shoulders to get that type of an item.
And or whoever it is.
Yeah, yeah, I don't mean to, I don't mean to pinpoint, it's just not my right.
I think we're all in agreement there, we're just saying it different ways. I'll give you an example, last week, I mean, Wendy Wood was up here with Mike Keane, and they're talking about the rail committee. I tell you, we don't have enough people on the staff to attend all the meetings these guys have got to attend, at state level, county level, New York State level, and everything else. But they come back and they presented things to the board, and they asked us specifically, hey, will you sign a, a letter saying that you are still in favor as a town of Bennington for passing your rail? And we did. I'll give you other examples that are the same way, it's just, you know, we got, what, 87 people on the staff, a lot of them are in maintenance and doing other things, but when you look at the action guys, we only have a handful of those people that actually go out there. And those should be the folks that work with these committees, to bring us the information, focus it, funnel it to us, so work there. I think that's, I think that's what we're looking for.
Well, to speak to the bike path, I mean, the town's been trying to come up with a bike path since, for 22 years that I've lived here.
Yeah.
And a year ago, this Economic Development Task Force got together, and one of the first things they said was, we'll just get a bike path, and I said, oh, here we go again. We got one. A year later, they got one. I'm like, I don't know how they did it, but they got one, you know. So sometimes getting outside of town government makes it a lot less onerous than doing it straight from town government, when you're talking about easements and things like that. I mean, and I've been told straight out by people, you cannot get the easements, it's just impossible. And then here we are, a year later, and they're making the thing, so.
Let's, we'll talk more about this plan, 90-day agenda, but let's, are we going to finalize? Tom, you have one last thing to say on the committee?
Yeah, I don't want to belabor it, but, you know, that was one of the impressive things about the plan, when it was presented, that this committee would be formalized, so that it would be the action committee, that it would not be just something that was done and forgotten. I think we've got to have the worker bees from these organizations be basically accountable for doing that act.
Agreed.
And I think we need to have it formalized, not just wait for a report back from the town.
Okay, Mike, go over what you just said before, how you've, you've got this already envisioned, and you've got a memo out there. We're going to do it one more time.
Sure. It's, it's not finalized, so it's certainly open for any feedback, but the idea being that, again, it becomes an advisory group. You, the board, are the ones accountable in terms of, you determine where the resources come from, it's your plan, you've, you've created it and purchased it, and gone through the process of identifying this plan, and will adopt it formally. This group, again, becomes just the arms to help implement that, using myself and obviously others from a more official capacity, but specifically me as the direct conduit, and the one responsible for making sure that that group is working on specific tasks or operations, and then feeding that information back to this board for either its approval or simply just to update you on the process. But again, you are the ones who are ultimately accountable for the plan, where I see the task force and myself specifically being the one responsible for making sure the actions get completed in the timeframe that you determine.
Okay, can you have this, go ahead.
What happens when they aren't completed, or if they don't get completed?
Sure. Well, I think you, you as the group are deciding that this task force is the group that should be the ones doing this. If you decide later on that this isn't the right group of people, or they're not meeting the objectives you set, you can always determine to have someone else be that entity. I think the concern...
But these are the people that are working out their own goodwill, right? These are, these are dedicated citizens.
And I guess my concern is that this group of 20 people that meet do that under their own volition, of their own free will, and I don't think that they had any idea that when they were creating this task force to work on common economic goals, that they wanted to be an official town commission. And so I would hate to create something that becomes more arduous than less, as, you know, as Greg was mentioning, to a point where it turns people off to wanting to participate, because you may not have the CEO of the hospital or of a major manufacturer that wants to sit on an official town board, but they have a critical component that they're meeting here. And so these, again, they do it because they see value in what the task force is doing, and I'd hate to ruin something that seems to be working quite effectively already. And so that being said, I'm willing to work as the conduit between this group and that group, and if you feel like it's not meeting your needs going forward, we simply talk about a different way to do that.
Yeah, I guess I would never turn down the, the input and hard work of people that are volunteering their time and effort. That's not something that I'm going after, and that's why I'd rather have someone that we're already appointing, we've already paid and put into a position to be accountable for the successes and failures. Successes and failures, not just failures. And, and each of these fall into categories that we've already determined should hold a position in the town. So I get what we have the, the team for, and I appreciate their time 100%, and in no way, shape, or form, if they didn't hit my goals, would I say to them, never mind, I don't want your help? Because I would be only appreciative of their help. So what I'm looking for is, someone needs to be accountable, and it needs to be a couple people that can say, hey, I'm hanging my hat on this. And I think that we already have appointed people in this town for those roles.
I've got a question for you, Mike.
Sure.
Have any of the people that are part of this current task force, have they expressed any, any opposition to a formalized, a more formalized approach, or were you just speculating?
Without coming out and directly saying we're against it, I have gotten the feeling, when we start talking adoption of a formalized committee and appointing members, where they now report to the Select Board, I have seen some opposition to that.
Majority, or?
No, no, just a couple people in passing and conversations, I don't know if you want to add something, Dan?
I think the important thing is to remember, almost all of these folks report to their own boards.
Right.
Or, or to their own company.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, you have to be careful about giving them another master, so to speak. And to John's point, yes, your staff is, if you say to us, hey, this is our plan, you guys go make it happen, Mike and I and Stuart and all the rest of the staff, whereas appropriate, are going to be working hard to make that happen, and we're going to be reporting to you. We propose quarterly and then annually, looking at how the progress we're making. So I think it's a combination of the staff being directly accountable to you and working very closely with the Economic Development Task Force, to bring in all the resources we can to accomplish this, because frankly, the town doesn't have all the resources necessary to accomplish everything in this goal. We have to, in this plan, we have to rely on our partners.
John, one of the things on here, let me read it. "Support the MAU math pilot program to foster increased math confidence and skills in students grades nine through 12. As appropriate, expand the model to reach more math students and students in other academic areas." Who do you want to hire in the town staff to do that?
You know, I knew you were going to pick that one. And I get that, but 35, 38 out of 40 all hit, hit a category, and with those, we can...
Yes, he does.
And I think if we go back to the initial Economic Development Task Force initiative, was communication among the groups already working on economic development in the town to reduce redundancy. And out of that initial initiative, they came up with these committees that started doing things like this, like making lists and doing things. So that's how it became a task force, is they would pick things and knock them down. I think we have to be very careful not to kill that.
Right.
I mean, the goal is communication and identifying who's working on things and what's going on. Adopting the plan basically clarifies what a study has identified as things that Bennington should be focusing on and assets that we already have in town. A lot of things, again, as we've identified, are already happening with these organizations. So I think still, we, we might want to clarify in the formalization of the board, that it is a communication body to, you know, coordinate these groups, and that's why I want to, I want to identify who should be on that board, because if everybody on the board is just on the chamber, and there's nobody from the BBC, and there's nobody from the BCIC, and there's nobody, you know, you don't, you lose that initial mission. And, and I think that's what's really key, and what's made it so successful, was, was that initial mission.
What I'd like to be able to see in this formalization is, for me, and I know you folks, I know you're involved with the downtown book score thing, let's do it. You should be able to go to somebody on this task force who has the time and dedication to work with the college, get this together, and, and keep us informed, you know, like you're doing right now. And John, you've got an interest, I'm sure, in something like this, somebody on that committee away from you, you go down and have a cup of coffee with them, hey, how's this moving? Is it moving along, or whatever the case may be? I think all of that brings, brings these things together. I'm, I'm personally interested in this free Wi-Fi hotspot thing, I want to see this happen, Mike, I want to see this happen.
Working on it.
Okay? And I'm talking to people downtown now, see if there's some private people who've got the, already have the hotspots, if there's a way we can bring those things together. So inside the designated downtown area, we have Wi-Fi, regardless of where you are.
So that would be the BBC, their responsibility?
John, John's executive, not necessarily, it could be, you know, I threw out the other day, maybe, was it Verizon and the Putnam Hotel, is that who, maybe they'll step forward as one of the carriers. Maybe they'll say, okay, we'll take the lead on this thing.
I've actually spoken to two of them already.
Is that, well, then I have to ask the question, is that to promote economic growth in our downtown area?
Well, I would say so. I would say so.
Bring people into the downtown.
Then that falls into a category.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm following along the lines of what John's coming up here with, and I, I think for this stuff not to get lost somewhere along the way is we do need to be able to look at each and every single one of these things. And even though, you know, we can need to be able to say, who is going to be responsible for this? We don't have a say over who volunteers is responsible for it, but we need to have a say over some of the organizations that are doing this, who we are putting these things on. And Joe, I think you make a good point when you read the final one there, support MAU math program, you know, so on and so forth. But I think maybe when it comes to this 90-day action agenda, if we can't look at every single one of these things and say, what agency or what person is going to be the contact on that, maybe it shouldn't be on the 90-day action agenda, because it's too general.
But I think that's Mike's responsibility to identify who should be taking the lead on each one of these subjects. I mean, we-
Sharon, you know, you're right, you're right and you're wrong. It's his responsibility too, but we're here as the board that's supposed to be overseeing this and approving this 90-day action plan. So I think if we can't actually point out who's going to be doing some of these things, we need to say, maybe we should take it off the 90-day action plan, put it somewhere else, and put something on here that's not quite as general, that's a little bit more specific than we know we can do with 90 days.
You're right, Justin, and again, this is a draft. We're not asked to approve this 90-day agenda tonight.
Right. We're asking for input on it, right?
We're asking for input on it, and we'll get there. But I still haven't put this first one to bed yet on the formalization, and I want to get that out of the way before we go on to these, look at these other eight items around here.
Well, I think, I think what I just said kind of, you know, comes into play with it too, is I, I think, and I don't want to speak for what Thomas is saying either, but I think he's kind of, I feel like you're kind of on the same line here, is we need to be able to point in a direction where how these things are going to get implemented and who is going to be the contact thing, and I think that's what John's getting at, and I'm, I'm kind of falling in line with that here, is we need to-
There needs to be some structure.
Right, and if, if my idea of the formalization isn't the right way to go, that's fine. Like, I'm not married to it. I'm open for, for other suggestions, but we need to have some cohesiveness in how we're going to do this.
I think that's where we're headed. I think we're all, we're talking different things. I think we're all want the same thing to happen. John, Tom?
I think probably Dan might even be saying the same thing. Come back to this board in two weeks with basically the action plan for developing the standing committee.
Yes.
And so we can say, that is holding water, or it doesn't hold water. I go back to the earlier part of the discussion, we can't tell who's going to be on that committee because soon as you start saying who, they're going to be off.
That's right.
We need those that are interested in the economic development plan, but not making it so onerous that they can't function without the town's support. So I would move that, if it's appropriate, for the management team to come back with the proposal for the formalization of the committee for the purpose of implementing the 90-day action agenda.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, we got number one beside down now. Okay. Mike, you got what we got to have next meeting, okay?
Yep.
And, you know, the bottom line is accountable. We know we're accountable as the board to the people of Bennington, but now this board's going to work with us, this committee, work with us, to assist us in meeting our obligations, providing these things we identify.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, now, now the time, Justin, let's look at some of these things here, and look at, it doesn't have to be eight or nine, it could be three, four, or five, guys. We just threw some ideas out here for the thinking. You thought of something, after you reviewed the plan, it's not on here, throw it out. Let's get it out here now.
One thing I would absolutely like to see on here, I think it's imperative if we're going to move anywhere in this, is an idea of what recruitment from the town level would look like to bring businesses into Bennington.
I had that as number one as well.
Absolutely imperative. I know we've been hesitant to get involved in it. It may work, it may not, but I would like to at least have the discussion coming forward to look at this plan, what that could look like if we chose to do it.
Okay.
Number one.
Is this something you want done in 90 days? You want to hear a recommendation of how we got to go there, or do you want to see something formed to move that way?
I would, I mean, I would prefer to have something formed to move that way. I would be, as a compromise, acceptable to a plan to come forward within 90 days to, to show what recruitment could look like, you know, from the town level.
Okay. If you wanted to tackle one of the objectives, we could use number four, which is a survey of our, our current employers and seeing what keeps them here, what they want to, or the ones that have left, why they're leaving, and collecting that survey data is everything that you're talking about. They'll give us the means to go after new business.
All right. You know, we got folks in town, Mike, that can help us on that. BBC has a recruiting committee, BCIC has a recruiting committee, Chamber has a recruiting committee. So I guess what we're asking for is come together of all that, and the hospital has recruiting. I mean, we, yeah, all the big ones.
There's lots to be done.
And I think they all have very-
Yeah.
-specific ideas on what they could use for some help and what their challenges.
So within the next 90 days, and I think that should be one of the things we, we need to have in front of the board.
Not to mention it might orient our, our future goals as well.
And just, and just to clarify, when I, when I say recruitment, I mean actually recruiting, actively recruiting business, not just individuals, but businesses to come relocate, open, open a branch of whatever it could possibly be in Bennington, whether it's, you know, commercial, industrial, things of any, of any sort of nature. It doesn't really matter to me what it is, as long as we're actively moving towards something.
I heard there's some gun manufacturers in Connecticut looking for new homes.
You know what, I mean, that-
Oh, seriously? I, I-
I know you're serious, and I'm not, that's the kind of things I'm talking about.
And Montana's just come on and been actively recruiting them, and Vermont has-
You're right. You see things like that, it's like, these places are going to go somewhere, why not come to Vermont?
Yep.
I mean, that's, that's the type of things that I, that I, that I mean when I say that.
And it happens, these happen immediately, too.
Can I just ask for some clarification between what you're saying, Justin, and what you're saying, Joe? So what I got from Joe is that a, a report of kind of a conglomeration of all the different recruitment efforts that are going on, but what I'm hearing you say, Justin, is more about what would a recruitment role look like from the town?
That's not quite what I wanted, Mike.
Okay. And that's why I'm looking for clarification.
While you threw those examples out, is you can give some ideas from these folks of what's working for them.
Okay.
And give us a plan that we can put our select board stamp on, that that is our recruiting plan.
And Mike, just to answer for the piece you directed to me, that you, that's correct. That's why, that's why.
And I think there's very different opinions on this board about what the town's role in recruitment should be. So I think the recommendations from those boards would be very helpful in, in us having that conversation.
And that discussion will happen when we bring that plan in front of us.
Right.
Okay? All right, so again, I don't think we should prioritize one, two, three, four. Let's come up with a, tonight with a number we think is doable in the next 90 days for the folks to work on, and that's what we'll, we'll hold accountable for the next 90-day agenda, okay? Any other ideas? Anything, let's, let's go to this here, anything you think should not be on here that we recommended here, or Dan?
Well, looking at a lot of these different tasks, a lot of them are the development of a strategy or a plan itself. They aren't actual action items to take action. So to me, a month and a half is a, an adequate amount of time to collect yourself, your thoughts, and develop some sort of plan or some beginnings of a plan. So I think we could even add more than just 10 action items on this 90-day agenda, if we choose those.
Let me, let me throw it this way. There's one I really want to see happen amongst the board's opinion. I want to have this meeting with the school boards. How's the rest of the board feel about that?
I agree.
More.
I think we got to do that, and-
Mullin was pretty clear in that last meeting that we said there.
Yeah, and I, and I know, like I said, I've got correspondence of some of the members of some of the other boards, they do want to have this meeting too, so. I think it should be a work session kind of thing, and not a formal, somebody's grand gavel, come in here, we'll put the tables around, and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll hash out what we got to do. We tried this before when there was some tension in the town, I guess it was over the middle school was what the tension was all about, and-
Yeah, it was before they all settled on that.
It didn't really work well, wasn't received well, but I think right now, I think it's timing's right.
Timing's right. Because you look at the matrix, and the education issues flow through almost every item in one way or another. So you're not going to get very far down the, the action plans unless we get everybody on the same, same board, plan.
And I don't think you're going to find anybody in education that's just going to say, nah, we're good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
It's not an easy industry right now to be in.
Well, I would, I would hope that the boards, especially BSD, with the town voters not approving their budget, be concerned about what's going on in town and want to discuss here are their opinions from other boards, what, some of the reasons why. And I would think they'd want to, they'd want to see, hear other, other things. Okay, identify property and secure lease for college downtown. I think that's one that's already working. Commerce, or commence efforts to attract college students downtown by addressing business hours, mixed businesses catered students to establish regular transportation night between colleges and downtown. How we, how do we feel about that one?
I think that's huge. That's not just college kids, that's everybody that gets out of work at 5:00. I mean, I can't go downtown myself because I'm working past their one hour, so I think that's a big one.
I mean, they're going to be gone in a few weeks.
Yeah.
The bulk of them, so I think it gives you, you know, time to work out a plan through the summer to see next fall what we're going to do to open up our downtown and try and-
Sure. I mean, that's a whole, that's a whole dynamic, that's a whole customer base that's really, you know, not being served one right now, and then, you know, really by the fact that they're not being served, really aren't able to contribute to what's going on either.
Yeah.
So I think that's, that's huge as well.
And I, I know from the BBC perspective, we've seen a lot more energy back and forth than we have in a long time. In years past, we've seen the colleges reach out and nobody answer. We've seen the town reach out and nobody answer. Now we've got both parties reaching out and, you know, and asking. Last year, we had that college night initiative, SBC was really the, the pushing force behind it, and then the Bennington College folks kind of jumped in and said, hey, we, why weren't we called? You know, we've got people who really want to see this happen on both sides of the fence, so I think-
And the transportation piece of that is huge in the mix also, dealing with that, so.
I'm working on that.
We have a, we have a represent-
Don't throw me under the bus. Don't hit the bus, okay?
Okay, how about the Wi-Fi one? We all agree that we want to be able to communicate?
Yes, we do.
It's got to happen in the town. If the college kids are going to come-
Yeah, they're not coming without it.
Okay, what have I missed here? How about the Nija Trail from Bennington to North Bennington?
How, how far along is that? I mean, it's, the thing's been kicking along.
You know, I don't know. Anybody know how far that?
It's out in the Morris Industrial Park.
Yeah, we're, we're into the Morris Industrial Park. That's really a, I have to give credit, all the credit to Joanne and Erin House. She really took the bull by the horns on this, has really organized volunteers and is working with the regional commission to put together the, the, the work that needs to be done. Right now, we're working with the state of Vermont to get a permit to go underneath Route 279 so folks can bypass that whole area on a bicycle, so they don't have to walk through that huge interchange. That is moving forward. So I would say that in, in, in 30 day, in 90 days to six months, we could have the whole area cleared, assuming that we get the necessary permits, from Hannaford all the way through to the Walmart area, and then we can carry on the trail through off, through on-road facilities and right down to downtown. So I think it's a real exciting project. I talked to John a lot about it. It certainly could, could benefit from some support from the town, and, you know, maybe we can leave it on there and have Joanne come back with the regional commission and chat with you folks, and you can make a final decision about whether you really want to take it to heart and push it. But I think it's one of these things, we talk about having accomplished something that people can see and feel. This is, this is a big thing, and, you know, folks have been talking about this, as Craig mentioned, for well over two decades. And this is a good way to really get a, a real good start on something that's real and people can enjoy. And there are people that really pay attention to those as, as attractions. It's, you know, it's something that gets around the, the cycling world and whatnot pretty quickly.
Let me ask you, when you say bike path, I mean, it's, it's a path people could walk on, run on.
Yeah, walking and bicycling.
Dog on it, right? I mean, is it-
There's actually walk path, too. There's some places that aren't bike friendly, rather, that they're turning into, I just know because I made some more trail markers for the walk path. So apparently, there's a split off somewhere for just, for walking, too, but yeah, you could.
It's really a recreational path with a transportation component to it?
Walking on a bike path, but yeah.
Dan, I've, I've got a question for you. When my dad was a kid, the, the corkscrew that ran through the, the trolley path, is that still owned by anyone?
The corkscrew is not owned by the railroad anymore, it's all owned by individual property owners. There was a push done by the regional commission probably about eight, nine years ago, and there were several property owners who basically said, over my dead body, so we had to, had to not pursue that. But it is, it is a wonderful opportunity, perhaps someday, if there's other bike networks, path networks, recreational path networks, folks will soften up to that and see what a great benefit it could be. But as of, you know, that recently, it was, it was not a go for that particular project.
It's too bad.
It's become a significant wildlife trail. Yes, it has.
Yeah.
It's amazing what comes up down that corkscrew. Bear, all kinds of things.
Yep. I think we caught them all. Is there anything you want to add to these? I, I guess we're not taking anything off of this, right? Is there, we had the one, recruiting one. Is there anything else we want to add to this?
I guess the only thing I would question is, is the, is the final one on there that we kind of, that I talked about a little bit, the, you know, not that it's the support for the pilot programs, it's not that it's a bad idea, but is that something that really fits into a 90-day action agenda?
Well, I think that fits into the meeting with the school board, too.
Well, I think you have the school board thing.
To tell you the truth, I don't really know what it is. I don't have kids in school.
So let's just wrap that in as one of the talking points we'll bring up when we get it to the board.
I think that makes sense.
Just put that up there.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's a pretty good list. How do you, what else do you feel? You think we need more than that? 90 days is a short period of time, folks.
Yeah, no, I think that's a-
Yeah.
We've got some important things here.
I view this as a, as a moving document, so things are going to go on the list and come off the list, and we're going to have different priorities, I think, as we go along, and that's our prerogative to be able to do that.
To a point, I agree, but I think we've got to stay with our list, stay with our priorities and finish it. The bar is not so high with this 90-day agenda.
No, I don't think so.
I'd like to see it finished, because we can say, well, we accomplished that.
Yes.
So the community knows that when we go to the next step, we're going to take that same resolute.
Right.
That's why, it's absolutely essential that if, once this comes back to you folks and you adopt it, that, that you as a board feel passionate about directing staff and to really make these things happen, because we're going to need resources, we're going to have to draw from resources from everybody else. As long as you folks are 100% behind this, I feel very confident we can make really good progress in a really short period of time. And so that's the key, and then, as I said, if we can show people that we've gotten the success in this short period of time, onto the next things, so.
Okay, I think we got this, put the rest here, so two weeks from now, it'll be on the agenda, put it at the end of the agenda again, okay? Be the last thing we talk about, Michelle?
Okay.
Okay, next item, liquor licenses. Dan, you want to circulate them?
Yes, it's for Old Castle Theater Company. There are two copies here, so I ask you to sign it.
You have a manager's report, Dan?
Yes, I do. Couple of minor things here. One, well, not so minor thing is the letter expressing support for rail service to North Bennington and the rest of the southwestern Vermont rail quarter, that was circulated in your packet, and I was, if it's appropriate, I'd circulate that for signatures if everyone feels comfortable with that.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Put that along. The only other action item I have this evening is the Catamount Rotary Club is holding a hole-in-one fundraiser on Lower Willow Park, and they are requesting a waiver of the townwide prohibition of alcohol on town properties. This is regularly granted for this event, so if there's, if that, if the board feels comfortable, I'd ask for a motion.
I have an objection. You need a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous?
One other informational, there is the, you'll see the update from Terry on the Morgan Springs Pump Station Generator. That is looking promising, the used generator that we're looking at. And then, one other item that Terry specifically asked me to let everyone know is from May 6th through May 10th, and from May 13th through May 17th, the town will be flushing hydrants. It's a requirement that we have to do, so we ask folks to be patient with that. You may experience some low water pressure during that period or some discolored water. If you do have discolored water, we ask you to just run your cold water for a while, it will clear up, so just want to give folks a heads up that that will be happening in May.
Dan, I didn't see a price on this memo about, is there preliminarily, we have an idea what we're talking about for the used generator?
Oh, okay. I do not know.
$18,000.
I didn't ask Terry about the price. Do you know, Joe?
$18,000.
Okay. It's a significant savings.
It's more than the generator, it's a tank, it's a drum of oil, it's hydraulic fluid, other things that they need.
Yes, that's true.
And we'll have estimates later.
It kicks out twice the capacity of the one they looked at before, required both pumps, they'd run both pumps on it. The owner is, town has had it over a week now, testing it, running it. The owner let them have it, make sure it's what they, what they want, what we want, before we have to make a purchase on it.
We hope to have that final proposal to you folks at the next meeting, so we can make a decision about moving forward.
Thank you.
That's all I have on the manager's report.
Okay. John, we're going to start with you this time. Any other business?
Nope.
Justin?
Yeah, I do have one thing, and actually, I see RJ out here, so maybe he might be able to speak a little bit on this, or maybe not this evening, because I know it probably doesn't have any information from him. But I received a call from somebody that had some concerns about trucks. Well, you know, it's a dealer, too, so I'm trying to figure out some information on what's going on. But apparently, we used to purchase international trucks from this gentleman, and now we have made the move into purchasing some other different truck potentially. And basically, the gist of the conversation that I had with him was, we can get the same thing essentially from him for a lesser price, and I'm just trying to figure out what the reason is we moved from one kind of brand of truck to another, and if there was a lower bid, why we're considering going with a more expensive product.
I'd be happy-
You don't have, you don't have that in front of you, I don't mean to put you on the spot either, so we could get this at a later date.
I'd be happy to address that, Justin.
Okay.
Unfortunately, this gentleman did not meet the bid specification.
Okay.
So, that's why we cannot go with that particular truck. The engine that he has proposed does not meet current EPA standards. It has been discontinued and, in fact, will not be made next year. They will be making EPA compliant truck engine next year that we can purchase from international. The engine that he has specced out is two and a half times more polluting than the EPA requires. So, that's why we had to throw that particular bid out. It did not meet the specification. We had three other bids that did meet the specification from three other manufacturers, so we don't consider that to be a significantly limiting factor.
Okay.
It is a significantly inferior engine that has been discontinued and doesn't meet the standards, so that's where that-
Because he had said that pretty much every town in Bennington and Wyndham County were using these trucks, along with the state of Vermont, and that we were going to be, you know, kind of the only one on the outside with this other product that costs more money, and I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing differently.
Well, as of, as of next year, absolutely no one in the state of Vermont, or the United States of America can purchase that particular engine, because it's completely illegal as of next year.
But, so, it's something we can do now, but we're choosing to go forward on a different note.
That won't preclude us from doing business with him in the future.
Absolutely. Next year, he'll have a compliant engine.
And I-
When I say he, his company that he represents will have a compliant engine.
Is there-
I don't know if RJ has anything else to add, but that's what happened with it.
All right. I'm just, I guess I'm just taking out loud a little bit, just wondering, you know, it was brought to my attention that one of the other dealers was in Shelburne. Is there a dealer in Shelburne, Vermont, that we would be looking to purchase from? And I guess my thought was just kind of being a little bit concerned of purchasing something so far away, as far as, you know, warranty, maintenance work, and stuff like that, where we have to potentially send, you know, probably two employees to Shelburne, Vermont, drop off a truck, come back, go back up and get the truck, you know, time lost, productivity, things of that nature. Do you have-
We did purchase two trucks last year in North Vermont. Moore's apparent, North Range, where it's a satellite service to the Kenmark. They have the same Kenmark meter system, they can plug in the truck, they can read the codes.
Okay. So, we're able to service those locally, we don't have to drive those to Shelburne.
A little bit, we have had them once, and six months, seven months.
Okay.
And repair them.
But of all our purchasing, we don't do any sole source, we do RFPs, and we put out, yeah, RFPs for everything we do.
Anything significant, we bid it out.
They're open bidding. We tell them the specs on the RFP, and then we review them, and then we evaluate.
Yes.
We don't always go to lowest bidder.
Sometimes we don't if it's an inferior product, and we've had problems with it. Yes, that's correct.
Just, you know, I just appreciate the information on it, it was just brought to my attention, so.
Yep, okay. Jim?
Nope.
Tom? Greg?
One thing, last meeting, we had a rather lengthy discussion about the recreation fields fees. Just going back, thinking about that, you know, that we changed the revenue anticipation, basically, for a budget item. We have a new budget coming up in July. I don't think any of us have a real number on what that number is going to be. I'd like to propose that we get a new policy, or get a policy in place based on our current approved budget for July 1st. And one of the things I was suggesting when we get down to it was possibly for the youth leagues, charging per team instead of per field, so that they can maybe more affordably pay for their league, depending on the size of the league. If the league gets bigger and they need more fields, then it's already built in there, but they can do what somebody suggested was, how much of each fee is based towards a field, then it would allow them to break it down. I really don't have an objection to the rest of the fee structure, but I think that might help the youth leagues a little bit and balance our budget a little better, so.
He was talking about for going forward in the future, because I think we did ask-
Yeah, we, what we did, I think, is set them, but I think, I would like to see a sunset on it of June 30th, so we can get something on the books for the next budget year, so that we have something going.
I know we did ask Larry and some other folks to come back to us with the plan, with exactly how, you know, a little bit, something more.
Right, how that's going to affect them and what they're-
And what it can look like going forward.
Yeah, I wanted to make a proposal to do that in a window, that we're ready to do that by June 30th, so we can-
How does the board feel about that? Is that, is that something you like? Because originally, you'd asked us to come back for budget season.
Right.
This is not, I don't think this is an issue, it's just a timing for you folks, how, when you want to address it.
Yeah, I mean, we never know how many fields we're going to be, when people are going to sign up.
Right, well, I'm thinking, if he can figure that out, and we can do that, so that, you know, because right now, we've gone back to the old fee system indefinitely.
Okay. Just, you hear the concern, Dan? Have Larry put together, not the plan, but come back to us, can you do it by sunset at 30 June?
Yes, so we can-
So, we can see it?
Yeah.
We'll also set a new fee structure by June 30.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just to say one thing is, when I talked about doing it at a later date, and I think, you know, sooner than later is always better, but just to get as much usable data as they can going forward to see how many teams are using it, how many kids are involved, what the hours are on it, just so when they actually formulate a policy, it's based upon, you know, some real information, and not just trying to guess at what, you know, the use may be.
Right.
But I agree with you, sooner the-
That's the only way it can be done, just-
Fair enough.
We don't want to see it next week, but let us know, if it's doable.
I'm sure we can get, I'm sure we can get something to you by the end of May.
Yeah, I think we decided to do it at budget season, if I look at the minutes.
That was the original thought, but-
That was the original thought.
We can certainly, we can certainly move that up.
Based on their recommendations and revenues, so.
Okay.
Well-
And there should be a difference between the youth sports and the adult leagues.
And I think that's my recommendation.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just a suggestion.